Call the Cumberland School Committee meeting to order at 7:30 ET. And please ask you to rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in our nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the official of the agenda, pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Fiorello for the second. Second by Mr. Denon and Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Who's opposed? That motion carries seven zero. It's really quiet in here. Goodness. Next item on the agenda is the student government report, student activities. Is there someone here from student government? No? Guess not. Too early in the school year. Next item is the consent agenda, approval of meeting, regular meeting, 8:14, executive session from 8:14, and also the student handbook for all grades. I think some were put in the packet later today. If you have questions, we can pull any of those items out of the consent agenda. Pleasure of the committee. Motion to approve the consent agenda, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Who's opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. All right. Next item, report out of executive session meeting from 8:28, 2014, which was today. There were no votes taken at that meeting, and I need a vote to seal the minutes of the executive session. Motion by Mr. Mutter, second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Who's opposed? And that motion carries seven zero. Next item, superintendent's report, opening of school at 8:00.
Good evening. I'd like to show you some pictures as I tell you about the opening. So if you can see the screen, great, if not, the shots are also on your iPad under my report. You can follow along with the pictures. I'll tell you which one I'm on, but leave a second to get there if you want to keep getting them. Well, you guys go in the audience, let's see some great shots of showing you these pictures. So, when we're ready? All right. Well, always look out if you're near or to, if you get a couple. So Mike, go ahead. First one, we did a lot of work this year in terms of just, once again, curb appeal and making sure all the spaces were really sharp. In some cases, we found there was some shrubbery and such that it was probably, you know, 10, 15 years old and kind of large size. But we did actually remove those extra large pieces. They really put in some nice pieces here. Here's the front of Ashton School, the opening of the school, Mike. Here's BF Norton. And we were at BF Norton the first day in the morning. It's really just great to see all the students going in. BF, just a lot of excitement there. Teachers, principal, all helping out as the students process in. Mike? Here's a nice mural. You'll find pieces all on our district from Up With People. That's a nice painting they did at BF Norton of as you go on the lower entrance of BF. And here we have Cumberland Hill in the front. Once again, just a lot of work done on the front of Cumberland Hill. Just really a nice upgrade. The playground at Garven, what topic of conversation? I can tell you Saturday morning, they'll be completing the work on the French drain to drain the water away from the area into the water area. So that'll be Saturday's task that's underway. Here, just a nice shot of a Garven teachers greeting the students. The first thing you saw at Garven as you walked in was that shot right there. It's a nice, nice Garven day. Busing, the shot of busing at community. I can tell you, as of, go back one more, as of day two on busing, the last bus got there today at 4:35, and that's great news. So busing really doing really well at the second day in. We always have our usual things to work on, but second day in, every bus in by 4:35. First day for the record was 5:09, a couple bumps. So second day, 4:35, wherever it needs to be. So we're really happy with the order of the busing. Mike? And here's just a shot of our community as you walk in. The first thing the students saw, community. Once again, some smiling faces from the teachers from the school there. Mike? A lot of work done around, once again, some of the older tree line. If you were at North Cumberland last year, you wouldn't be able to see that sign saying North Cumberland Middle School. The trees obstructed it, so it cut them all off along the district, just kind of raised all the trees up. That's one example right there. Mike? Here's our, our principal, Ms. Coughlin. That's around 7:00 in the morning. She's always full of energy, so I just wanted to capture that.
Do you have the 4 o'clock one?
I don't. I don't.
Before and after?
Fit set, underway. Once again, some improvements in North Cumberland last year. I don't know if you knew, we had some things to work on in the North Cumberland Middle School gym. We put in a new curtain divider to separate the two visit areas through a flat curtain last year. We replaced ropes that were cut with climbing ropes and a cargo net. All, so now the gym is in full working order. And that's great news. That's North Cumberland right there, Mr. Broder, I believe. Mike? We've replaced some carpets around the district that were in desperate need of replacement. This is one of them. North Cumberland's library had a lot of waves in the carpet. That was replaced. Also, the Garven library was done. And also, I know in the second floor, the train, there's some carpets that were very dated that have been done or are being done right now. So that's all happening in the district. Go ahead. And what's, a lot of painting going on. Here's one example. North Cumberland Middle is underway on a major painting overhaul on the inside. That's the main entryway. It's got kind of some red look to it. If you walk down North Cumberland's hallway, you'll see some very dated colors, probably from the 1970s, vintage. We're taking care of all that this fall. That's being done. BF had a lot of painting done. Accord finished their painting last year. So there are a lot of work with just refreshing all the areas. So that's at North. Mike? And of course, Chromebooks. I have to talk about Chromebooks, just profoundly changing the culture here at the middle school. This is a, this is a shot. I really didn't have to do much. Walked in, waved to them, they smiled at me, took the picture. But just, you know, real great, great change in culture. I was telling some folks earlier, one teacher at the middle school made some forms, pink form, a yellow form, and paper forms. And the kids made the Google Doc in the back really quickly and said, "We don't need those." She was thrilled, and they were thrilled, and they just took the form online, and that was it. So just a real profound change. As with anything, you have some hiccups. Our first day of the Chromebooks, we had some Wi-Fi stuff to deal with, and Mike's team went out there and fixed it, just took care of it. So just a nice response into, you know, overall, like how many? 1,130 users, give or take? The Chromebook handouts went really well. We had three sessions in each, each middle school. A whole batch of Chromebooks. Mike, they might tell me we only had two bad books that got swapped out. So two books out of the whole batch, not too bad. We obviously have spares in the mix, but really, some of it's fantastic. The batteries, I talked to one student yesterday, the guy was supposed to go eight hours. After a whole day at school, he's still at about 80 percent battery life. So really happy so far. The carrying cases, Mike, are those?
We should see those. The first batch that came in yesterday, the rest of it should probably be Tuesday or Wednesday, so as soon as they demand, we'll get them.
Great. Okay. Next one, Mike? High school. This is the first day. Those two large students that left are freshmen, actually. But the oldest students in blue are helping them with their lockers. So that's the freshman, freshman day to high school. Go ahead. As you know, fiscal cell approved some brickwork. Part of the brickwork job was to power wash the building. You'd be amazed how it looks. It looks brand new around the building. The rust or patina under the bone is gone. The whole back of the building has a new look in the brick. The brick that was cracked is all being replaced. It's almost done now. The last piece right in front of the high school now, but just a great, great. Mike, go ahead. There's the last piece they're working on, the front corner of the high school. They're finishing up the brickwork. They have a really, a real nice job. Mike? Up with people, there they are. They're all throughout the high school. And just, once again, quick commercial for the video of the show. First show is, I believe, 7:00 PM Friday night. So we're looking to have folks come out and dip it all throughout the high school. Actually putting on, I think, a show for the high schools are one, I believe. So that's what happened tomorrow, come on by and see it early. And Mike? And here's what it's all about, Mike. Favorite picture of the year so far, that little guy with his big SpongeBob backpack. To me, that's it. That sets it all right there, but that is what it's all about. But I don't know what grade, I mean, obviously, he's not in fifth grade. But just, you know, going to school, he's excited, you know, walking up the stairs, and just, it really makes me happy seeing that. So it's overall a nice opening. Couple of things to work on here. They have a really special opening to go, pretty smooth. Buses were smooth. A section's covered by flat classrooms, materials are in, so we have things to do, but it's going well.
Thank you. Mr. Delacqua?
Doctor, do you know if the Durham buses provided, the buses that are supposed to get for us on the new project?
Yeah, I'll check. It's banana. I don't know if they're in yet or if they were in. I'll check. There were 12, I believe.
Anyone else? And no hurricane this year?
No.
Good weather. Terrific. Okay. Next item on the agenda, chairperson's report. As everyone's aware, we leave funding formula and the BEP on the agenda for discussion. I want to acknowledge Councilor Murray for his presence this evening. Thanks for joining us. But one of the items we have, Mike, I think I forwarded it to you and for the committee in, it's the school committee meetings folder for today. There's an Excel file. RIDE recently released its per pupil expenditure for fiscal 13. And as you know, we're entering fiscal 15, so they do it a little bit behind. But I wanted to provide you with a little summary of what was noted over that period. For fiscal 13, our per pupil expenditure actually dropped $138 from $12,280. It was $12,418. And what we looked at also was some of the breakouts for the dollar figures. As you know, the UCOA breaks it into five categories, instruction, instructional support, operations, other commitments, and leadership. And, you know, surprisingly, even though we have the situation with the Department of Ed, providing, or the state providing additional state funding, it's not being directed to instruction and instructional support. And in addition, there's more money from the state, but less money for per pupil expenditure overall. So we're hoping to do a little bit of a deep dive on that to get a better understanding of what exactly that means to the district. And one of the concerning areas that we've had are the, is the area of other commitments. And you can see that that number has dropped, and I think it's important to know kind of why that is. And Mike, if you can go to the next tab on that. Yeah, and scroll down a bit. So as you're all aware, we've been tabulating the different categories of UCOA. And I think what we're looking for is the other commitment one, Mike. So you can see that's highlighted. So the area that's in kind of the orangey, the lighter color, those are costs that are within our control, and those costs have declined from fiscal 12 to first fiscal 13 by about $700,000, from 3.7 million to $3 million. Unfortunately, we've had increasing costs for charter school tuitions of $518,000 in that single year. It's important to note, in that other commitment section, we've had a significant increase in that timeframe of special ed tuitions. I think that was important because as we've brought those programs back into the district, they are cost savings to us in general, but we also know we have staffing increases because we're creating those programs inside of that school. So it's frustrating from the standpoint of we are doing our diligence and cost savings, yet we're not able to control some of these budget areas. My hope is that we can go through this activity a little further. Mike, there's one more tab. One of the concerning things that I have maintained, if you scroll down to item two, item two there talks about that funds can't be supplanted. And if our instructional money and instructional support money, and some money in the other two categories, is BEP money, the concern is that we are supplanting state money. So that's all I have for today, but it is a concern of ours, and we'll dig a little deeper. If anyone has any questions or interests with regard to that, let me know. I don't know if there's anything specifically that the committee would like to see with regard to this information, but I do think now that we have this, and we will also have the audited fiscal 14 numbers pretty soon, we can then start to map out. I think having the UCOA stuff now, we've got a couple of years of it. And in addition, we have the audited fiscal 14 numbers, so we can then start to tell what the story is with regard to our concern on the funding level for the BEP. Any questions from the committee? Mr. Mutter?
Thank you.
Yes?
Is there any hope that the Board of Regents for elementary and secondary education is going to take a stance on what actually is the BEP and what the funding, a more definitive answer as to what the funding of that means?
I can't speak for the Board of Regents, but I think it's a great question that we can certainly direct to them.
Thank you.
Well, I know we've struggled, and it feels like to some extent we're spinning our wheels because we do feel that the UCOA dictates where, how BEP monies are spent, it chronicles that. And we remain concerned that we aren't funding it, and I think it would be good if the Board of Education were able to clarify for us specifically, are we or aren't we supporting and funding the BEP appropriately?
Thank you.
Mr. Denon?
The $138 deduction in the PPE is a concern. And do we, I guess it would be nice to know why. You know, I'm interested in this. Any ideas?
So why there's a decline overall? The short answer is I believe that the tuition expenses that we have that go out of the district are eating into any of the revenue that's being brought in. And while we're plugging holes in our boat, there's a bigger hole that we just can't seem to address, and the addressing of it is at the local, exclusively at the local level.
I have an answer right now. I figured we'd need to look into this a little more too, to see what's going on, or what happened.
Yeah, I'm in agreement, and we can certainly have, we could start as, you know, a special programs committee to focus some attention on that because I know it's, folks have contributed piecemeal, different analysis around it. And we did work collaboratively with the town, and that was its own activity there. But I think in order for us to have a real concrete understanding of where our monies go and what money is, you know, BEP money and what money is core money, I think it's important for us to know that because if your PPE is actually declining, that's a problem. Thank you. Anyone else? Want to?
Thank you, Monsieur. But I mean, from the, from what is on our Google Docs, it's obvious that we'd be in the plus side if it wasn't for the reduction in the other commitments. And it's clear in by the other commitments that the pass of charter schools, which is the number that makes that number less. So the easy answer to why the PPE is down is because the other commitment line is up, and that's where it's up. So, well, once again, it still becomes, it still becomes an issue of, you know, it's a great topic I'd love to discuss, and, but unless someone's going to take a stand on what the basic education program is, or whether or not they're even in charge of it, or what it means to not fund it, there seems to be little that will come of it unless you can get more people to believe enough in that argument to do something that they haven't done previously. Because in absence of someone actually, we've been, you know, this was a great, I thought it was, you know, a great exercise to go through, but ultimately, we went down to RIDE. They didn't, they didn't offer much as far as, you know, foundation in which to make an argument, about as politically correct as I can say that. I mean, so, but clearly, that the PPE is down because of that, and, but I don't, but I think that's because the issue needs to be discussed with the funding formula and that. I don't believe when it was adopted, they, I think Cumberland is a different community. It wasn't, it has a different dynamic than what they probably expected, or most communities have, and therefore, it's just not working here. That's my, just my personal belief, is that they didn't anticipate having the entity, the charter school that we have here. It's not like that in other communities, and so I think it works better if you don't have that, but what do you do when you do have it? And they need to address that. And if, but if they're not going to address it, then, you know, what are you going to do? But I mean, mathematically, obviously, the reason that it's down is because of that. And I don't think that's, that's not saying anything negatively about the charter school. That's just looking at the numbers. So if the pastor was less, our per pupil would be up, and it should be up because there's been more money allocated to education, both from the state and the town. While I know this is 2013, but it should be up because there's been more money.
Yes, and annually, the state had provided an additional roughly between $700,000 and $800,000 to the school, to the school district for use for BEP. But you can see as that money is washed out that year, that money was directed elsewhere. Anyone else? All right. Good conversation. Gave you guys the summer off. Next item on the agenda is, oh, and for folks interested, it is on the RIDE website if they want to look up what the UCOA information is and the per pupil expenditure numbers. Next item, reports of standing committees payment of bills. Mr. Mutter?
The details that Monsieur there are now paying of bills this evening.
Outstanding.
Thank you.
Would you like to go right to fiscal management subcommittee?
I would love to, Monsieur. There is no report from fiscal management subcommittee that I'm aware of because I did not, was I the last fiscal management? So if another member of fiscal management would like to update it, then that would be the appropriate time of the month, Monsieur.
You were absent. Next item on the agenda, policy and procedures, subcommittee update. Thank you. We did not meet since our last meeting, but our, we'll have a September 23 meeting, 6:30. Thank you. Excellent. And this evening, we had achievement in communications, subcommittee, and we had two activities before us. The first one, in June, we had the high school guidance counselors come to us to talk a bit about the high school program and how they support guidance in our schools. And we asked them to come back with an action plan as to how they're going to align their practices so that regardless of the guidance counselor you have, are assigned to, you can expect a certain level of standard with that. In addition, they're taking some more kind of global opportunities to provide communication to students and families through social media and other avenues that you can sign up for and be told 100 times that the SATs are coming up. So we were, I'll state personally, I was pleased to see the level of detail and thought that went into this. I'll be excited to see how it rolls out in the schools this year. There is a little something for each grade, as well as the families, so that parents can have opportunities. They've adjusted the school schedule so that, I think it's on Wednesdays, they open a little early and they close a little later outside of the school day, so working families can go in to, to ask guidance any, any type of question about any activity that their kids are involved in, including the college planning process. And they do have a college fair coming up that I'm sure parents are going to want to hear more about, and I believe that that is October 10th, at 7:15 a.m. to 10:30 a.m. So mark your calendars. They typically have about 50 colleges in place. They do it during the school year because they get great attendance with the students. And that was, that was outstanding. The other thing that we heard about was Project Lead the Way and the first course that will be offered. Melinda Borden was able to attend a professional development series for 13 days at Duke University over the summer to prepare for the course. They have a full section, I believe, of students that are freshmen. They will add the next level of coursework next year, but it's very hands-on. It's going to be a crime scene, so I think there'll be some level of interest in that with the students, and maybe our assistant superintendent there will be part of the crime scene. I think he's very interested in that activity. But it's very hands-on, it's very project-based, it's a very different type of class atmosphere and attitude. There's technology involved. They do all sorts of lab experiments, starting with some blood tests, and they do DNA typing. So Mrs. Teal and I are going back to school. And she's going to return back to us, I think, sometime in the winter or something, which I don't know how. So that's, that's that. Anyone have any questions on that? And if you do, gentlemen, want a copy of the guidance activity, we can certainly make that available to you. It was a really good little action plan that they had worked on collaboratively over the, over the summer, and it has some very good evidence and timeline and the staff responsibility around that, so we're really pleased to see that. All right. Next item on the agenda, public hearing. We have a policy. And Mrs. Teal, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Again, so this would be the second reading for policy B2, basic management principles and ethical school standards. If you'll recall, we read it into the record last meeting, and this, there have been no changes to the policies. I received no comment on the policies, and the policy belong, brings us into compliance with Rhode Island general law 162-9. And on a 3-0 vote again, it was approved in subcommittee. So this would be my second reading of B2, basic management principles and ethical school standards. Thank you.
Thank you. So with regard to public comment, does anyone in the public wish to speak? We have for or against this policy, basic management principles and ethical school standards. Very none? Excellent. Okay, so we will call the public hearing closed at this time. Next item, comments from the public. Would anyone wish to speak at the podium about any topic, not limited to, not limited to the policy? All right, everyone must be packing lunches for tomorrow and filling out all those little health cards. Next item, home business, discussion under move to approve resolution SCR 2014-05, 2014-15 employee compensation. Mr. Mutter, was this in fiscal management? Have some point?
I'm sure. I don't believe that this has been. If there was, it was when I was not present. This is basically, or is, I should say, a resolution that just provides the public with an opportunity to, on pay scale or actual amounts for anyone who is employed by the district as part of that transparent, I think I would change, I know we changed the policy number, but it was, it used to, as a G6, it used to be GCV? I think it was G6. Anyway, this is part of that. And we do this every year based on, you know, changes that are unnecessary due to collective bargaining and other decisions made by the school committee. With that being said, I'm in the passage of SCR 2014-05.
Mr. Mutter moves passage of the resolution. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Fiorello. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Who's opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Thank you. Next item, new business, discussion under move to approve overnight student field trip to Quebec City, Canada, 2015.
We had some folks here this evening to talk to us. Welcome back.
I'm Leslie Moore, and I'm a sixth grade science teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. And this is Rachel Emmerich, seventh grade science teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. Basically, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer what we can right now. I'd be happy to get the answer for anything that you guys have, you want to know going forward. Okay?
So this is an annual trip that the kids take part in?
17 years, I think, or 18 years this year. I've been 12 times myself. Eight for Mrs. Emmerich. Really is a great experience. I know many of you have had children that have attended the trip.
Is it like a four-day?
I believe on Thursday afternoon, return on Monday night. Thursday after school.
Mr. Salvatore?
Yes. Is any, has the agenda stayed the same from last year?
Basically, it's almost exactly the same. There is one thing, we did eliminate, there was a ferry. There is one thing, we did eliminate, it was a ferry trip across the St. Lawrence River that we did after dinner one night, just because the river is mostly frozen, and we were a little nervous about the safety of the children. So we decided to leave that out. What it does is actually just goes across the river and then comes back. And we just thought that because it's an open kind of ferry, it was better if we eliminated that on the trip, or that night.
Has anyone taken the place of that?
I'm sure something has because there is not a free moment on this trip whatsoever. I would have to say there is a specific cultural event that we've thought about adding, and I think we've added it to the agenda regarding a circus school that's there. Circus Soleil is very big in that area of Canada. And there's a little bit of culture and stuff with Circus Soleil. So I don't know if it's, it's not at night, that event, but it's, we moved other things around so that we can fit that in.
Thank you. Also, has the cost gone up?
I want to say, I looked at that briefly this afternoon. I want to say it's within $1 to $2 of the cost that it was last year. So we have worked very hard at keeping the cost the same, if not marginally increased.
The same type of fundraising aspects as last year?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, so pleasure of the committee to approve the overnight student field trip to Quebec City. Mr. DeMonica, do I have a second? Second by Mr. Dutton and Mr. Mutter. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? That motion carries seven to you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Enjoy. Next item on the agenda is discussion of legal summary of reporting requirements. Oh, I'm sorry. Homeschool, I'm so far away, can't see the paper. Homeschool instruction request for 1415 school year.
Madam Chair, as you can imagine, this is a busy time of year for home instruction requests. So we have received a lot of requests from parents. They have all submitted the required paperwork, so we recommend approval.
Motion by Mr. Mutter? Second by Mrs. Teal. Mr. Salvatore?
Mr. Mitchell, does this number of requests seem to be up?
I don't, I don't think it's any higher than it has been for at least the last two years since I have been here. So I think, I think there is a pretty consistent number of students.
And I apologize for not being educated on how this works exactly. Do we follow up with the students and make sure the parents are sticking with the program that was in?
No, that's a great question. There is a process that has to be followed, and parents are required to submit the curriculum that they're going to be using for homeschooling. And then they are required to submit at the midpoint of the school year, believe it or not, attendance records and grades. And then again, at the end of the school year, they submit that same information. And that's important because there are homeschool students who come back to us, and that information is helpful for us when we have to place students, should they return. But I think, you know, as you can imagine, I think for the most part, the parents of homeschools, they're pretty conscientious, and I believe that they, they find a curriculum that really works for them. So I think they are conscientious about holding their children accountable to doing, you know, the appropriate work that is expected.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries seven to you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Next item on the agenda is discussion of legal summary of reporting requirements from mayoral academies to the sending district per 1677.4-2. And this was an agenda item requested by Mr. DeMonica last meeting. And we have asked our legal counsel, Mr. Adams, to provide us with kind of an overview of that. Mr. Adams?
May I go down there?
You, sure, can.
I'm very excited to do that. Yeah. I hope you bet your run away.
Madam Chair, just for my, because I missed the last meeting, just give me like a summary of why this is, well, that's the reason why it's been brought up, or I just, yeah, why is this on the back?
Sure. Mr. DeMonica, do you want to summarize?
Well, looking at state law, state law indicated that the mayoral academies were supposed to give a report to the sending school districts. And checking, we've never received anything from the mayoral academies. And that adds to this law, and I just ask that Mr. Adams, look at this and tell us if they're following state procedure or not. We spend a lot of money to the so-called mayoral academies' public schools, and, you know, if they're supposed to have reporting requirements to us, then I'd like to see it gets followed.
Okay, so just, we don't spend that much, we send them because the charter is, we don't spend that much. So I'm just wondering why, okay, so we just, this is very informational only as to, have we asked for information and not gotten it? Are we having an issue with that? Or just, I'm just wondering what we have to, so just basically informational only?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mutter. I view my task as informational. So I have a very brief PowerPoint I learned from the communications director to keep it brief at the administrative retreat. But before I get into that, just for informational purposes, the Charter Act, Charter School Act is actually divided into really three sections because there are actually three different types of charter schools, and I thought it would be useful to the committee to understand that, and perhaps the public as well. There are what are known as district charter schools. So a school, a public school district could actually have a charter school within its district, and the city of Providence has at least two that I can think of. So they are public school districts that include teachers who are members of the collective bargaining agreement for the city of Providence. They are funded by the city like a regular school, so the distinction is somewhat unclear even to me. Then there are charter schools called independent charter schools, and those are formed by nonprofits. A nonprofit can form an independent charter school, and they have school boards, much like you, except they're not elected, they're essentially appointed, which is actually the same as the city of Providence. They're not elected either, they're appointed by the mayor. But in this case, the nonprofit appoints the members of the board. And then we have the mayoral academy, which is what BVP is here. So I thought I'd just make sure that you had that understanding because the law's been divided into three sections, and the section that's been mentioned already tonight is the section that governs only mayoral academies. And that's all I'm going to be talking about briefly. So I'm not used to having somebody helping with a PowerPoint, but Mike, that's awesome. Thank you. So section 1677.4-2 describes essentially the procedure for creating one of these mayoral academies. And the gist of it is that the mayor submits a proposed charter to the commissioner. And the democracy prep, which is what it was at its inception, submitted a proposed charter to the commissioner, but this is dated, amended November 29, 2009. What happens with that proposed charter is it can be changed and futzed with, it goes before the Board of Regents, much like some proposal might go before all of you. The Board of Regents or the Board of Education, as it's now known, can make comments, can make changes, can say, we're not going to accept this, we're going to accept that, et cetera. And then eventually, that charter, that proposed charter is essentially the law that governs that institution, once the Board of Regents votes to approve the charter. So there is no, what often happens is people want to find the charter. Where's the charter? The charter is the proposed charter, that there's some vote in some analog of the Board of Regents that says it was approved. So if you ask RIDE for the approved charter of a charter school, whether it's a mayoral academy or any other, all you're going to get is the proposed charter. That, that is the charter, if that makes any sense. So within this, the statute says that the charter school, there's a litany of things in this particular section that are requirements, and I could go through them all, but you can read the statute yourself as well. Essentially, they're supposed to indicate the performance criteria for the charter. And as Mr. DeMonica pointed out, they are supposed to have an agreement within the charter to provide yearly reports to the sending school committee on progress and meeting objectives, along with yearly reports to, I think, the commissioner of education and the Board of Regents. In reviewing this particular charter, which I did look at, it's 64 pages long, so I will tell you that I did not go line by line, but I used the function that Mike Chandler probably is familiar with in the PDF to do searches for agreement, school committee, school, school committee, committee, sending district, district. And I didn't find any agreement within this charter to provide that to this committee. That doesn't mean that they're not obligated under 1677.4-2. It may mean that the charter is deficient because the statute says they are obligated to put this agreement in the charter, whether it's there or not, for whatever it's worth. But in general, this section requires that the, that the charters, the mayoral charter school is supposed to be as transparent as you folks are in every aspect of what they do, whether it be finances, administration, et cetera. Section 1677.4-8 describes the general reporting requirements of charter schools separate from what I've just described. By the way, there is no description of what the agreement to provide yearly reports to the sending school committee on progress and meeting objectives means. I mean, it seems self-explanatory, but I'm a lawyer, so nothing is self-explanatory to a lawyer. In any event, this particular section that I'm now talking about, 1677.4-8, it's mostly financial. It's their, it's reporting on their factual, their financial operations, tracking their actual versus their budget figures. They're supposed to submit quarterly reports to the State Office of Municipal Affairs regarding their budget. They're supposed to, and then there's a litany of things that they do there. They indicate their actual versus projected shortfalls in the budget, plans to address those shortfalls, et cetera. And then there's a procedure, if they haven't been compliant with respect to their financial reporting requirements, that gives the director of administration, which is a state-level office, the right to actually file an action in the Superior Court against a mayoral academy if they haven't been providing financial reporting in accordance with what's described in this statute. And they can actually have their charter revoked if they're not doing it. I did not look in this particular case, I did not talk with the director of administration, I did not talk with that office or try to learn what this particular charter school is doing. I can only presume that they are in fact following this because rightward in the statute says that their charter can be revoked if they're failing to comply with the reporting obligations. If you go to the next slide, Mike. So then this is always an interesting one, particularly with mayoral academies. 1677.4-3 provides that the Board of Regents can grant variances to various provisions of Title 16. So Title 16, as you all know, is the big statute for educate, for education. There are other statutes that govern education, but Title 16 is the big one, right? And it's where we've got teacher tenure, it's where we've got a lot of things that govern how you operate, gives you guys how you operate, obviously. So the variances cannot affect health and safety or civil rights of pupils, so those variances cannot be granted if they were asked, you know, are we going to discriminate against a particular protected class? They can't do that. In, in the Rhode Island mayoral academy, Remus request, they requested, which is pretty typical, they just requested a blanket waiver of all state laws and regulations that the commissioner is legally empowered to waive, which is everything under Title 16 that is non-enumerated. Mike? Oh, that's awesome. In the next statute, which is 1677.4-7, and that is, that, those statutes that are enumerated there are not waivable. So just looking quickly, 16-8-10, federal funds for school lunch. The commissioner can't waive that. That's something that they are obligated as a mayoral academy to do. But, you know, noticeably, absence, for example, is something that I deal with as a lawyer, both with, with all the communities that we work with. But 1613 is teacher tenure. That is waivable. So mayoral academy may not have to comply with the law with respect to tenure. There are a host of other things that they don't have in terms of their obligations, but I point that out just for your edification. Obviously, it's a little bit different than their reporting requirements. That's it, there's a laundry list, there may be three pages. The last page maybe is questions. And given my role as a lawyer, this is actually multiple choice, so if you have questions, that's great, I'm happy to answer them, but probably answer A is it depends, answer B is I'll check on that, answer C is quite likely, and answer D is unlikely. But, so that's, I'm guessing those are going to be the answers if you have questions, but I obviously don't take any questions you guys have.
Mr. Salvatore?
When you did the research, have you found that any, the mayoral academy was not in compliance to anything in regards to this problem?
I can tell you, I didn't look for that. I am aware, I have become aware, that BVP has, at least as far as I understand, has not provided a report to the school committee in accordance with 1677.42, I think is the first one. And in fact, it seems that the charter itself is not in compliance because it's supposed to have in it an agreement to do that. You know, I view that as kind of real technicality. I think as long as they're actually doing it, providing the reporting on a yearly basis, you know, that's not a big deal. But as far as I understand, they're not providing that. I don't know whether they're providing it to the commissioner and the others referenced in the statute.
Mr. DeMonica?
This has been so much talk up here about the, talk about the BEP and school funding and so forth. Can this school district look at the finances of the BVP's children? The money that we're sending them and how it's being spent? Can we do that legally?
I can't see why you wouldn't, because all that stuff should be in UCOA, unless there is some privacy concern that you guys, the same sorts of, you know, unless there's a FERPA issue with respect to particular kids or something like that, they have the same reporting requirements, unless, and I didn't look to see whether under, if you want to go backwards, I don't know whether they have been exempted out from reporting for UCOA purposes, but I'm pretty sure they're there. So I would think so. I would think that that would be something, you could certainly ask them and then find out what they, you know, find out what their position is now.
We don't approve any of the charter school budgets.
Say that again?
We don't, Commonwealth Public Schools here does not approve any of the charter school budgets that are out there. Yet RIDE tells us how much we have to send them per student in regards to our funding for them. Yet I find it hard that this school district here does not have a say, or may have a say but never tried to do it, in regards to how they're spending their money.
That...
It comes into a budget item.
Yeah, that I can tell you. I think you'd have a difficult road to hoe if you wanted to impose your thoughts on how they spend their money. One, you know, with school choice, whether it's a mayoral academy or any other public school, that, you know, they are an LEA, a local education agency, they are a public school. They have to, mayoral academies are different in a lot of respects because of the, most particularly, and most precious is the, the teacher tenure stuff, but they have the same, they are not dissimilar to you in that respect. No one is telling you how to spend your money, except the laws that tell you you have to spend X, Y, Z, you have to provide X, Y, Z, whether they be federal or state or local. And they may have some of that, but that's, that's not what the law talks about, as far as I can see.
But this public school district has to go in front of the Commonwealth Town Council and send a budget request to the mayor versus the charter schools do not.
That's absolutely...
Leaves us in a bind where Mr. Brignan was told me in the past, their money comes off the top. And I question, looking at their tax returns and what they've done... And I question, looking at their tax returns and what they've done recently, whether they're spending our tax dollars appropriately and that we should have a say in regards to some of the items that they're spending. They're not being transparent.
I certainly understand what you're saying. I think that's less a legal question. I think that, I don't know that that's actually a legal question. I understand exactly what you're saying, but I'm not sure it's a legal question. Their funding, your funding mechanism is from the state, the feds, and your, the taxpayers here. Their funding mechanism is different. They get money from the state, the feds, and they get money directly from you. They cannot, for example, ask for more. Now, you guys can ask for more, maybe the local will give it to you, or maybe they won't. They have a different, they have a slightly different, they get what they get, if you will. But oversight by local school committee is not part of the law now. It could be, if you wanted it to be, and you've got the votes in the general assembly to get that to happen, but that's not the way the law works at this point from a legal perspective.
Mr. Ferrell.
Mr. Adams, is that any different than when we send a student to a Nsoket Tech or any of the other charter schools around the state? We have no, we just write the check that RIDE basically sets their tuition at.
Correct. The money follows the student.
Yep.
Yep.
Mr. Adams, so on the agreement to provide yearly reports is 1677.4-2. Is that waivable? Because it's not under the not-wavable.
It's a very good question.
So if it was, let's just say it was waivable, then would anybody, would they need to send you one?
Yeah. Here's my thought. I can't, it isn't expressly articulated as not-wavable under 1677. In other words, Mike, if you scroll down to the bottom, one more. Nope, that is the bottom. Okay. The last statutory scheme that is, nope, one more, keep going. Oh, no, I guess it's number 29 then. We get up to 71. 16-71 is something that's not waivable. It's a very interesting argument. I think it's a loser. I can't imagine 1677.4 is waivable.
You've got some more other ones to work with. So 1674-2 is not listed as a, it is a, not listed in the non-wavable column. That's correct.
You are absolutely correct, sir. I'll answer that question.
Thank you. And so, and I appreciate Mr. Salvatore's question, because I'm always wary when it's on the docket that this is a, you know, it's like other things. I mean, there's almost, I'm not saying it is, but it's like, well, do we think they're not reporting? And that's why you're in front, and I'm sure we're compensating you for that, to say, well, here's what they are, this is somewhat of an inference that they're not. And so I appreciate Mr. Salvatore's question, that you're not, there's no one stating that they are not obliging by whatever reporting requirements they're supposed to.
I'm not.
Right. So clearly, that's not, that's not being said yet, right? And so, and then to the, so back to my original point, I mean, have we asked for? It, you know, I still go back to the old way, which would be, I want some information, I ask for it, and then if I don't get it, well, then I avail myself to other options in which, whether legislatively or not, to try to get it. And so, and I know this is a, like, obviously, a hotbed topic in the town, but as long as we're careful, you know, my preference would be to have some, I don't know if anybody was invited here from mayoral academies, but I always feel better that you have people representation. I'm a little, you know, I was getting uneasy during some of it, saying that, you know, whether or not you like it, you don't like it, isn't really relevant. And it's whether, you know, if it's there and it's legally, legally there and they're doing everything they're supposed to do, then that's great, you know, and we can, we can not like it, but it's still the way it is. So I'm just, I'm slightly uncomfortable with anything short of, you know, just information, if you will. I don't think, I'm not sure, you know, how healthy it is to be having a discussion like that, unless they were not involved. Thanks.
Mr. Salvatore.
Mr. Adams, wait. So it seems like they're not being compliant with the 16-77-4-2.
I don't know that.
Which is, submit, propose charge to the commissioner or get us what we need. And if they're not, does that put us in any type of non-compliance?
I can't imagine that that would be the case. If a charter school isn't complying with their reporting requirements as described, I mean, my, my guess is, is that the first step would be, is, I hate to say it, I hate to agree with Mr. Mutter, is to call them up and say, can we have that? And likely, you'd get it, because they, I can't imagine that they're not complying with whatever the commissioner is asking of them. Maybe they are, maybe they aren't. I don't know.
Mayor. Have we, have we gotten anything from them prior years? Do we know?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Adams. Yeah, we did have, as all are aware, a little bit of a conversation about the statute and the concern around, do we know what the reporting requirements are? And I think you've outlined what, what they are, and that there's some vagueness to that, and that perhaps the next advisable step would be to, to reach out, to confirm where, where and when, and what it will entail. I think that was largely the question, because, you know, as we, each of us have read the statutes around BEP, you know, and I know, we all have different interpretations of what it should or what you want it to mean. So I think that was the impetus behind putting it on the agenda, was for information for the committee, so that we could determine what the next steps would be. And I appreciate the PowerPoint.
Thank you. I hope I was helpful.
Yeah, I'll say.
May I step down?
You can step down. See, I just can't believe that the same entity then, that we, you know, we want RIDE to make a decision based on whether or not we're getting a report, which, and it's very, as Mr. Adams said, agreement to provide yearly reports to the sending school committee on progress and meeting objectives. What does that mean? And, and, but yeah, you want that same entity, you can't tell us what the BEP is, or take a, you know, any sort of stance on that, but we want to know this. That, that's, if you're a little testy or whatever, that's, I'm like, I can't, I guess, everything's important, I could ask whether or not we are meeting every single statutory requirement of Section 16, and have Mr. Adams come back with that next week, and I get a sneaky suspicion that's going to cost us more money than this one did. So I mean, all I'm saying is, I'm always wary of getting in trouble, like, you know, I'm wary of this, you know, if we're gonna, if it makes the docket, you should have something. If you feel like we're not getting something, then it's good to, it's important to be right when we're challenging people's integrity on whether or not they're providing documentation, or whether or not they handle the situation procedurally correct. Because the minute you insinuate that, and you're wrong, it's they are the ones who have to defend themselves. I've been very consistent on this over my tenure. So you have to be right. So if you think they're not providing the necessary documentation, then you ought to call them on and prove it before you take them to task. And I'm not saying that's what happened, but it gets dangerously close.
All right. Mr. Demonic.
Just for record, Mr. Adams is on a flat rate for the month, so whatever you were to ask him, it's all part of the same.
Thank you, Dr. Thornton.
Thank you.
All right, are we all set with that? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of verification of tuition payments. Dr. Thornton, do we have something from Mr. Pernan with regard to that? Do you want to speak to it, or do you want me to speak to it?
Please do.
Okay. So as I understand it, we had a desire to know when we do budget for tuitions, whether or not we get information from RIDE. And RIDE does provide us with a worksheet as to what the rate is and what the number of students is. And in addition to that, that does get adjusted as we move along, and the tuition is based on the student enrollment, and I think it's done once or twice during, during the semester.
Yeah, I think possibly twice. I know, case in point, with the charter, all of our charters, we did a number around budget time of 401, say, December, January, and then we did it again, you know, May, June, then to 387. So the target is moving.
Does that answer your question? Yeah. And we do know that in some instances, there's a transition activity as part of the funding formula, and there's a kind of a worksheet that RIDE provides and publishes. It's not easy to find, but it is available periodically on their website. Next item, discussion and are going to approve second reading of new policy, B2 Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards.
So at this point, the B2 Basic Management Principles and Ethical School Standards has been read into the record two times, and I would like to make a motion that the two basic management principles and ethical school standards be accepted. It was approved in subcommittee on a 3-0 vote.
Thank you. So Mrs. Teal moves passage of policy B2, and that's seconded by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0. Next item on the agenda is personnel recommendations.
So I want to start, I have a few resignations. I'll start with those. So I request the advising consent of the school committee on the following resignations. Michelle Lamoth, school nurse teacher slash coordinator of nursing services at the Cumberland School Department, effective August 22, 2014. Edward Packham, technology education teacher at Cumberland High School, effective August 20th, 2014. Karen Robinson, science teacher at Cumberland High School, effective August 20th, 2014. And Glenn Whitfield, social studies teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August 22, 2014.
Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Ferrell to accept the resignations. Second. Second by Mr. Dunnan. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries 7-0.
We have two retirements for you. I request the advising consent of the school committee on the following retirements. Sandra Shaw, French teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective June 30, 2014. Ms. Shaw is leaving us after 24 years of service for the Cumberland School Department. And Eleanor Teal, grade one teacher at Joseph J. McLaughlin Carmelton Hill School, effective June 30, 2014. Ms. Teal is leaving us after 42 years of service. So I'd like to thank them both for their service to the Cumberland School Department.
Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Demonica. Motion by a second. Second by Mrs. Teal. Any further discussion? Those Teals are party, not the Mrs. Teal. All those in favor? Those opposed? And that motion carries 7-0.
Thank you. Our two leave of absences. I request the advising consent of the school committee on the following leave of absences. Sandra Lynn White, science teacher at Cumberland High School for the 2014-2015 school year. As you remember, these two are unpaid, these would be considered unpaid leave of absences. As well as Betsy Glauchakal, math teacher at Cumberland High School for the 2014-2015 school year.
Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Mutter. Second by Mr. Ferrell. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Did I forget something? Yes.
No, I was going, I just want to make sure that, I guess I'm supposed to recuse myself under appointments for one of those, on that will be mentioned, even though I really don't think I need to, but I'm not going to ask Mr. Adams for an appointment, I mean, for his expertise on that matter, I'm just going to do it.
This is under the appointments. Is that correct?
It is, it is, may I?
You want me to pull that one up first for the next round, or last?
That would be absolutely, I appreciate that.
I'll do that one first, so that...
Perfect.
So I request the advising consent... Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm a little astonished that you are bringing forth resignations days before schools start. And I'm curious if there is anything that we can do to eliminate that practice, as it is incredibly disruptive to our students.
All right. Please chime in. While it is problematic, I don't believe we have recourse to stop someone from resigning when they want to resign. Everyone has their own particular set of reasons, and as frustrating as it can be, it happens.
All I would note for you is that prior to the VJ Day holiday, Victory Day holiday, I was feeling pretty good about staffing, and then there seemed to be an onslaught of, these obviously were not presented to us for the August 14 school committee meeting, or we would have put them on the agenda at that point. So they've come since that point. I agree with Dr. Thornton, I don't believe that there's anything that we can do, but I've kind of taken the position at this point, if NAPLAD does not want to be with us, we don't really want them. And I don't mean that just respectfully. We obviously want people who want to be employed by the Cumberland School Department are happy to be here. So I would much rather, during the first two weeks of school, you know, post and hire for someone who's really excited to come and be part of our, our team, than prohibit someone from leaving and maybe causing an issue.
I totally appreciate that. I just think it's incredibly unprofessional and does a great disservice to the district and to our students.
Thank you, Mrs. Teal.
So I'm going to link, I'm going to just the first appointment, which is the single. So I request the advising consent of the school committee on the appointment of Erica Mutter, English language arts teacher at North Cumberland Middle School. Ms. Mutter will, it was effective August 25, 2014. She will be a .6 FTE. She's a Step 1 with no lien and a 22% copay. I will mention for you that Ms. Mutter did several long-term substitute positions for us last year at high school and did a phenomenal job, and so we readily picture up where we had a spot.
Perfect. Pleasure of the committee. Motion by Mr. Demonica, second by Mr. Salvatore. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? And we have one recusal, so that passes 6 to 0 on one recusal.
I'll take the remainder of the appointments together, if that's okay.
Sure.
So I request the advising consent of the school committee on the following appointments. Diana Anderson, social studies teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August 25, 2014. .6 FTE, Step 6 with a master's. Sean Connolly, social studies teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August 25, 2014. He's a Step 1, is a full-time FTE. Just for the record, you're probably looking at me curiously, because we previously appointed Mr. Connolly, we appointed him last school committee to a one-year position. So when the North Cumberland position became open from the resignation of Mr. Whitfield, we immediately moved Mr. Connolly, well, we asked Mr. Connolly if he would like that position, and he enthusiastically took it. So that's why we're just, we're reappointing him to make sure it's to the right position. Bernadette Durkin, grade one teacher in a one-year position at Joseph J. McLaughlin Elementary School, effective August 21, 2014. She's a full-time teacher at Step 1. Joseph Lima, technology education teacher at Cumberland High School, effective August 25, 2014. He's a .5 FTE, coming to us as Step 2. David Moniz, elementary music teacher at the Cumberland School Department, because their system-wide, our itinerary is a system-wide, which is August 25, effective August 25, 2014. He's full-time, and he's a Step 1. Caitlin Oler, who is a PAP, health teacher, system-wide, effective August 28, 2014. She's a .5, Step 1 at Ashton, she'll be assigned at Ashton, although she's System 1. Dean Palmer Jr., technology education teacher at North Cumberland Middle School, effective August 25, 2014. He's a full-time at Step 1. I'm going to say this one wrong. Akash Shah, chemistry teacher at Cumberland High School, effective August 28, 2014. He's a full-time, and he's Step 1. Kevin Sutherland, AP, PE and health, system-wide, although who could be, I'm sorry, Caitlin will be at BF Norton, Kevin will be at Ashton, I apologize, effective August 28, 2014. He's, comes to us as a .6, and he's a Step 1. And last but not least, Tara Villanova, elementary art teacher at the Cumberland School Department, effective August 25, 2014. She's a .6, and comes to us as a Step 5 of the masters.
Mr. Demonic.
Oh, I'm so sorry. I skipped over her, I'm sorry. So I request the advice and consent of the school committee for Rachel Madeira's social studies, she was taking Sean Connolly's position, that one-year position at Cumberland High School, I'm sorry, she comes to us as a step one, and she will be appointed for the one-year position here at the high school, I apologize.
Good catch, Mr. DeMonica, and pleasure of the committee.
Thank you.
Mr. Salvatore.
I see. Second, second for discussion.
Can you make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell.
Mr. Salvatore, this is my question.
Yes, certainly.
Ms. Fogle, I got to say, going through the resumes, a pretty impressive group of people, happy to have them.
I agree, we've been very pleased with our hires.
Thank you, any further questions?
No, because they're teaching now, I think it was different during the summer when they were waiting to get into the classroom, but now they're, they're working, so I think they're better prepping.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that motion carries seven to zero.
And lastly, I have the coaching appointment, so I'm actually just going to ask you to approve the appointments, and I believe that they're in your drive, that were forwarded by Mr., I say his name wrong every time, Tajian, the athletics director for the fall sports, are they in your drive?
Not that I'm aware of.
Because I didn't, all right, you know what, I'll take those up at the month for next time, because it won't, okay, thank you.
Perfect, thank you. Next item on the agenda is school committee comments, school liaison reports, anyone? Mr. Farrell.
I just want to say that with BF Norton, the day before school started with my daughter, and there were so many of the kids from Apple People, painting like mad, throughout the halls, outside, the murals, the school looks fantastic, I just like to say thank you to them. I'd also like to thank the administration for taking care of the garden playground, it's been a big issue for those parents and staff. I know Mr. DeMonica and I have worked on the BTO, and I'm sure that they are very happy that that is finally resolved, hopefully resolved.
Thank you, was that the issue with the French trains?
Yes.
We've been talking about French trains, I think since my freshman...
Well, there were two, there were French trains in the front of the, in the middle playgrounds.
I see, okay. Good. Anyone else? And do we have executive session this evening, Dr. Thornton?
We do have it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Farrell, do we have a second? Thank you, Mrs. Teal. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And we are adjourned this evening, happy to work, happy school year.